Welcome. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 8th Planning Commission hearing. My name is Holly Quayar, and I serve as the Chair. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Mouch to lead us in the pledge. You will please stand. At this time, we will introduce the members of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department staff. We'll start to our right with our legal counsel.
Tori Eisenberg, Deputy Assistant Attorney.
Michael Mouch, I have the pleasure of serving the city as the at-large representative.
Walter Kemp, representing District 1, Kempsville area.
John Cromwell, Punggol and Blackwater, District 2.
Good afternoon, Mike Anderson, District 3.
Kathryn Beiler, District 4, which includes Town Center and Burton Station and all the way up to Newtown Road.
Holly Quayar, District 8.
Tom Costin, District 9.
Kathryn Schoonover, District 5.
Brian Plumley, Beautiful District 6, from historic SeaTac to the north end of Virginia Beach.
Susan Hippen, District 7, Salem-Tallwood College Park.
Kaitlin Alcock, Planning Administrator. Clerking to my left, we have Kristen Bauer, Briotany Harrison, and Grace Smith. In the audience, we have Planning Director Kathy Warren, Deputy Director Carrie Bookhold. With our Planning Administration team, we have Marshall Coleman, Mike Hayes, and Alexis Bailey. We have Zoning Administrator Hannah Sabo. And with IT support, we have Rachel Levine and Faith Velaskis.
Thank you very much. Next, I've asked the clerk to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. We request that cellphones be put on silent during this meeting. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the Order of Business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairperson will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak per item unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes per item. If a speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Our next item on the agenda is the portion where we ask for the consideration of requests to withdraw or defer. Please come forward if you have any items to be withdrawn. Welcome. If you could please state your name for the record.
Joshua Kicker, and withdrew for Wave Church withdrawing, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Withdrawing the application for the community center that was proposed on our property.
Okay, and we do have your letter on file, sir, and that's Agenda Item Number 6. Does anyone here have any objections to this being withdrawn? Thank you very much. Are there any additional withdrawals? We do have a letter on file for Agenda Item Number 8. Elgin Ventura, a conditional use permit for a residential kennel. Are there any objections to having that withdrawn? Hearing none, I will ask for the Commission for a motion for withdrawal for these two agenda items.
I move to withdraw Items 6 and 8.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Plumley for withdrawal, seconded by Commissioner Hippen. Are there any Commissioners abstaining on these items to be withdrawn? Any discussion?
The vote is open. By recorded vote, 10 to 0. Items 6 and 8 have been recommended for withdrawal.
Thank you very much. The next item would be items for deferral. Are there any items for deferral from the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item. The next order of business is the consent agenda, and I'm going to turn that over to the Vice Chair to run that portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we have 11 items on the consent agenda. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. The first item we shall have is our minutes, and there are four records of minutes, and we've asked Commissioner Kemp to read these minutes into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The following minute, the following meeting minutes shall be part of the consent agenda, subject to corrections that have been submitted by the Commission members and subject to abstentions that I will note for specific items. First, the minutes of the informal Planning Commission meeting held on September 10, 2025. Second, the minutes of the formal Commission hearing held on September 10, 2025. Third, the minutes of the September 17, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Public Meeting, subject to abstentions by Vice Chair Costin, Anderson, Beiler, Cromwell, and Hippen for the reason that they were not present at the meeting. Next, the minutes of the Comprehensive Plan Public Meeting held on September 18, 2025, subject to abstentions by Chair Quayar, Vice Chair Costin, and Commissioners Anderson, Hippen, Mouch, and Plumley for the reasons that they were not present at that meeting. The, by consent, the minutes of the Planning Commission Retreat held on September 24, 25 shall be deferred because we just received those draft minutes last night. And lastly, for motion forward, the minutes of the October 2, 2025 Site Visit, subject to abstentions by Commissioners Beiler, Cromwell, Chair Quayar, Hippen, and Plumley for the reasons that they were not present at the site visit. That concludes the minutes portion.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is Item Number 1. John M. Nichols, property owner, change in nonconformity. Is there a representative here today? Please come to the mic and state your name for the record.
My name is Rob McLawhorn with L&amp;M Contractors, and I'd be doing the work for Mr. Nichols.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
I'm sorry?
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Kemp to read this item into the record.
This application is a request for a change in nonconformity in addition to an existing nonconforming structure at 1029 Hillview Boulevard. The dwelling was constructed in 1965. The applicable rear yard setback was 10 feet. In 1988, the city adopted the zoning ordinance requiring a larger setback in the rear to 20 feet. The existing house is only 16.9 feet from the property line. The expansion will not encroach further than the existing house, and therefore, we see no issue with this and place it on the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, sir. The next item is Item 2. Amanda Linehart, change in conformity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Costin. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Bredon, Virginia Beach Attorney. I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Win Short, Win is in attendance this afternoon, and a very accomplished architect, their daughter Amanda Linehart, on this application. I want to put a couple of things I feel like I need to put in the record, given the type of variance this is. It's a single-family home that is illegally conforming use in the R5R district, only the structure is nonconforming. As such, the home having been built in 1945 before there was a zoning ordinance in Prince of San County, that is the reason why there's slight encroachments and two setbacks, one of which was not even an encroachment when the first zoning ordinance was imposed. But that's a legally recognized hardship. It isn't shared generally by other properties in that zoning district, and granting the variance will not be detrimental to surrounding properties, and the variance is not contrary to the purpose, intent, or spirit of the ordinance. And all four conditions are acceptable, and we appreciate being placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Plumley to read this item into the record.
Yes, the applicant is Amanda Linehart. The property owners are Jane and Winthrop Short. This is 20375th Street in District 6. The request is to build in addition to an existing legally nonconforming, single-family dwelling with a new entryway, living room, bedroom, office, bathroom on the first floor, a bedroom and sitting area, studio space on a newly constructed second floor. The house will have a bronze metal roof with composite siding. It will constitute an expansion of this nonconforming use, since approximately 13 square feet will encroach into the rear yard setback. Our planning staff has recommended approval. There is no objection lodged, no speaker in opposition, and the Commission sought that to place this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Our next item is Item 3. Catholic Diocese of Richmond, property on the Catholic Diocese of Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Madam Chair, again for the record, Eddie Bredon, Virginia Beach Attorney. I apologize, but, Mr. Plumley, but the use of the property in the previous application is not nonconforming. It's the structure that's nonconforming. It's not a nonconforming use, which is what you all have always heard. So anyway, we appreciate this application being placed on the consent agenda. Deacon Ed Handel with the Catholic Diocese is in attendance this afternoon. All 11 conditions as recommended by the staff are acceptable, and appreciate the work of staff on this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the planning, on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Cromwell to read this item into the record.
On November 19, 2024, the City Council approved a conditional use permit for a cemetery on these AG1 and AG2 agricultural district zone parcels. The site is located within the 70 to 75 decibel noise contour. The applicant is now requesting a modification to the approved conditional use permit to revise the conceptual site plan. The original proposal included an office building, crematorium gardens, a columbarium, mausoleums, internal roadways, and a stormwater management facility. While the overall conceptual plan remains largely unchanged, the applicant proposes to replace the previously planned cremation gardens and two future mausoleums with a 2,750 square foot funeral apartment, funeral chapel, excuse me. The zoning ordinance does not specify minimum parking requirements for cemeteries. The applicant plans to provide 51 parking spaces on-site. Being it is located in the 70 to 75 decibel noise zone, the application was considered by the Joint City Navy Review, processed, and approved. Hearing no opposition to this application, it's on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Our next item is Item 4. Property owner, C4FS LLC, modification of conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Rob Beeman. I'm a local land use attorney at the Troutman Pepper Lock Law Firm here today on behalf of the applicant. We've had a chance to review the conditions. They're acceptable, and we appreciate being on the consent agenda. But I did want to take the opportunity to thank Commissioners Anderson and Kemp for all their work on this application and meeting us out on the site a couple of times, including one very late at night. So appreciate that, and thank you again for being on consent.
Thank you, sir. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Anderson to read this item into the record.
Thank you. On March 15, 2022, the City Council approved a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse facility on 1.6 acres in B2 Community Business District Zone Parcel. The site located within the Fairfield Shopping Center was approved for development in a three-story, climate-controlled self-storage facility. The applicant is requesting a modification of conditions to amend Condition 4 of the 2022 Conditional Use Permit, which currently limits all on-site signage to external illumination only. The modified condition now proposed as Condition 5 will allow both external and internal illumination for building-mounted signage only. However, no illuminated sign will be permitted on the west elevation of the structure. While not proposed with the previous application, the applicant now proposes a freestanding sign on the property. A rendering has, the, this is a little old, but a rendering has not been provided at this time, therefore, Conditions 6 and 7 are recommended to ensure the sign meets all requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uses, colors, and materials consistent with the building comply with all these base landscaping requirements and is limited to the external illumination. No other modifications are proposed to the previously approved conceptual site layout, landscape plan, or building elevations and renderings. For this, there was no objections. We put it on the consent, other than a, one abstention.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is Item 11. Small circle tattoo, property owner, V.I.S. Corp. Is there, ah, there it is.
How y'all doing?
Please state your name for the record.
Todd Ramsey.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Mouch to read this item into the record.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a traditional tattoo parlor on this B2 Community Business Zoned Parcel, where tattoo parlors are conditionally permitted. The proposed tattoo parlor will occupy an existing 864 square foot unit within the Chimney Hill Shopping Center. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 8 p.m. by appointment only. Their request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's land use policies for the suburban area and consistent with the residential and commercial nature of the surrounding properties. For these reasons, staff's favorable recommendation and hearing no objection from the public, the Planning Commission finds it acceptable to place this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next item is Item 12. Bessem Ho and Makum Adesso, conditional use permit for short-term rental. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bessem Adesso.
Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Schoonover to read this item into the record.
The applicant Bessem and Mukong Adesso are seeking a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Suite 1002, in the Dolphin Run condominiums. The site has no prior zoning complaints or violations associated with this unit. The property would have been considered a grandfathered short-term rental, however, since the property was not used as a short-term rental for a period of two years or more, its grandfather designation has been lost and had to be repaid for. The Commission considered this a reasonable request, and there was no opposition. I would like to place this on the consent agenda, please.
Thank you. Item 13. City of Virginia Beach, an ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, this parks needs assessment.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Chad Morris. I'm with Parks and Recreation, Planning, Design, and Development Administrator. Thank you for putting this on the consent agenda. We're excited about this long-range plan. This is an implementation strategy for the next 15 years. It's going to be our guiding principles on how we develop park sites, take care of the assets that we have, look at, we're looking at things through an equity lens, and gives us guidance on where we can put our resources in that will meet the best needs of the community. And once again, thank you for your recommendation for consent.
Thank you. Is there any objection to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Commissioner Kemp to read this item into the record.
The Park System Needs Assessment and Development Strategy, dated 2024. It's a long-range plan intended to develop the city's parks and open space system as one of the foremost in the nation over a 15-year implementation action plan. It prioritizes equity as the basis and lends to evaluate opportunities for investment in the system and guide the city's CIP budget process. No opposition has been raised to this plan, and therefore, we are recommending that it be on the consent agenda. This is following a four-year extensive public engagement process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda. Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Items, four records of minutes, Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 11, 12, and 13.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do I have a motion to approve by consent as read by the Vice Chair?
I would like to note my abstention from Item 4. I think you may have, we're going to ask that after, but I'm beating you to the punch. And I do move to approve with also the abstentions noted by Commissioner Kemp in the minute portion of the consent agenda.
And is there a second?
I second.
So we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Plumley for the consent agenda with his notation of the abstention for the letter that is on file. We have a second by Commissioner Schoonover.
The vote is open. By recorded vote of 10 to 0, all aforementioned, with all aforementioned abstentions and minutes, Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 11, 12, and 13 have been recommended for approval by consent.
Thank you very much. If you had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming City Council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applicants on the consent agenda, thank you for your participation. You may remain at the meeting, either virtually or in person, but you're also free to leave. Our next order of business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, are you ready for the first item?
Yes, our first item is Item 5. Wave Church.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Josh Kicker, if I need to state it again, for Wave Church?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to share with you today, so if you notice the lights on the podium, green is where we'll be beginning, yellow is when your time's coming to an end, and then red will be when you conclude.
Okay. This is an application to continue the use of the modular classrooms that are on the backside of our property. They've been in use for some time now for religious instruction, spiritual formation development, youth ministry programs along those, and we're asking, there was a time limit to them, I guess on the CUP, we're asking that to be extended for continued use.
Great, well, I appreciate that. I had a question in reference to the modular classrooms. It wasn't clear to me when, when they were erected and maybe what your long-term plan is, just with a limited timeframe. It leads to the expectation that they might only be there for a short time, and I wasn't sure, you know, with the withdrawal of your other application, what the long-term plan was.
Sure. The original, the modulators were erected in 2015, so they've been in use for some time now, approximately 10 years. And because we're actively using now, we wanted to focus on getting that sorted and a continued use on them. We don't have any plans with the previous withdrawal to continue that project or do that community-type center on the plan. That's not part of the long-term plan anymore. We wanted to get this rectified, and then anything else in future development would be in line with the existing CUP stipulations and conditions, and any deviation from that in the future would have to come back before the Commission anyway. But we don't have anything that would be outside of that realm.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Plumley?
Sir, it was brought up during the informal that there was an RV on part of this property. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
And is that, is the intent to have that moved off that part?
Based off conversations in the last couple of days, since it was brought to the attention, I think that is the current plan, yes.
So that's your agreement to do that? Is that fair?
Yeah, if it's a condition of the CUP and the modifications, yes.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hippen?
Good afternoon. So you said that these modular units were erected in 2015. You have been given five-year conditional use. To my understanding, these were only to be temporary. 10 years seems a little longer than temporary. Now you're asking for them to go 15 years. They do not have restroom facilities or any type of, any type of facilities in them. So how long are you going to use these?
We don't have a current set date on an in-use of them. The original CUP and master plan for the site included a youth center that would be adjacent to the two primary buildings that are on the site currently. Given different conditions that have gone through the course of the years through COVID and different challenges that churches have faced, we have not yet put together a architectural rendering or plan for that building. So the modulators allowed us to continue active ministry with our youth and young adults programs that are actively engaged, and while they don't have facilities attached, they obviously do have ramps for ADA purposes, but, and we do have facilities right there, right inside the main doors to the facility that are easily accessible to the youth when they are used on Sundays. And so I don't have a set date. We lived off the five years prior. Obviously, it extended longer, but that's why, because they're actively used and because we don't have a current construction date in mind on the youth center, that's why we're here asking for a continued use of them.
Okay, and what is the, what is the condition of those trailers right now?
As far as the physical condition of them?
Because they're 10 years old now.
Yeah, they're still in great shape. They're still actively used and utilized, and so they're not run down or deteriorated in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Plumley?
That was my question. I went by the location, but I wasn't able to go into the units, and they look to be in fair condition, not perfect condition, but fair condition. And your statement is they're still in safe condition today?
Yes, they are still safe, and the interiors are well-conditioned, but no wear and tear across the use.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, sir. So the timeframe that might be anticipated to plan and fundraise or get certain permits for the envisioned future site that would take the place of these temporary trailers, would you say that might be a three- to five-year process to do such things?
That would be our hope, yes, that we could be able to do that and get the congregation rallied to be able to do that future project.
I'm familiar with the challenges in nonprofit fundraising. So I'm asking the question, you're here today for another five-year extension, but at the moment, you don't actually have a go-forward plan, and a go-forward plan might take three to five years to get you there. Do you anticipate being back here in five years, asking for another extension, given this particular timeline?
The hope would not be to, and obviously, modulators have a useful life to them as far as their functionality and condition. And so we would be willing to, if we had to come back in five years, we would be willing to evaluate the condition of the actual modulators. If for some reason we still needed to continue and they were fully deteriorated, you know, we could find some other plans if we haven't been able to fully develop the fundraising strategy and get further along on the primary youth center that we'd like to build.
Thank you for your response.
And one additional question. How many students are in each of the modular classrooms?
So one is primarily used for an outreach called Wave City Care, so it's not necessarily students. It's, helps with food pantry distribution, community outreach, those types of things. So it serves as sort of a hub for that. And then, and the other modular on a, it varies week to week and meeting to meeting, but I reckon to be there probably 50 youthish between those main Sunday outreach and then midweek, various based off the class size or the current instructional size.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Costin?
I move that we approve this item.
We have a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
John, would you consider putting the condition for the removal of the RV in that motion?
Yes.
Okay. And I will amend my second to reflect that.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Costin for approval, seconded by Commissioner Plumley with the condition for the removal of the RV on the property. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Mouch?
Should there be a timeframe that we establish for the removal?
I believe that's being handled by the code enforcement people.
Maybe we can get some clarification from Ms. Eisenberg on that?
I mean, it's certainly up to the commission if you'd like to place a timeframe on it. I do think it would make it easier for enforcement purposes if we know when it has to be removed by. Typically, a notice of violation through the Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Department would be 30 days. I'm not suggesting that it has to be that quickly. I don't know if they've worked out some sort of timeframe, but just as a starting point, that's their typical timeframe.
Okay. I'll accept that, sir.
With the timeframe?
Thirty days.
Would we like for clarification on the timeframe?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
And I'll agree to that modification for the second.
And what we would ask the applicant as well?
Are the conditions acceptable to clarify? It's 30 days to clarify the timeframe or 30 days for?
Thirty days to remove the RV. I'm going to repeat the motion in just a minute for you.
Understood.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval by Commissioner Costin, seconded by Commissioner Plumley with the conditions for the removal of the RV within 30 days.
That's it.
Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote is open?
By a recorded vote, 10 to zero, item number five, Wave Church, has been recommended for approval. Our next item is item seven, Brickle LLC.
Hello.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, again, for the record, Adrian Braden, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Brickle LLC, Brian and Kelly Large. The subject property is 25,800 square feet. It is zone R 7.5 on the west side of Pleasure House Road. The property is surrounded by, on the north, two separate development, well, one is R 5R with six duplex units, three duplexes, two in each, six units. A 12 above that. To the south on Pleasure House Road, directly adjacent, are three parcels, zoned A 18 with some apartment complex buildings. The one on the adjacent, directly adjacent property has 10 units on it. Directly across Pleasure House Road to the east is a property I had the pleasure of representing Rick Greger on when he developed it many years ago, which is on PDH 2. And that's a zoning district where you have flexibility. It has an underlying A 12 density, the same as, as exists on properties throughout this area, including what we're cresting today. The, but PDH 2 allows you to create a basically zoning and the single-family homes on it with private roads throughout, and their dense, their impervious surface is actually greater than 40%, which is the threshold for A 12, but the PDH 2 allows that variation. What's proposed here, and Michael Hayes did an excellent job, I appreciate all the patience on, on the part of staff. The proposal is to construct seven units in two buildings. The units, the end units have two-car garages. The interior, three units, interior, two on one building and one interior on the three-unit building have one-car garages. All of them have two outside the garage parking spaces. The garages are proffered to not be able to be converted. This will be a condominium as well, it'll be in the condominium declaration. The, the unit's garages cannot be converted to living space. They are there for garages. And then we've got five guest parking spaces, three full-size, two compact, for a total of 30 parking spaces for seven units. The plan also, at, at the request, and it would have been required, but we put it on the plan to make it clear, we will be, as a part of the site plan approval and building the property, we will be putting in the multipurpose trail, large sidewalk in front of the property that's in the CIP project for widening and improving Pleasure House Road. We will also, because the, under the piped drainage ditch, our drainage system on the property to the south, the pipe is smaller in size than is going to be required for the CIP project. So we couldn't put in the, the correct-sized drainage pipe. We'll continue to use the current system, but we will be cost participating, cost-sharing when that CIP project comes into play. And that'll be a part of what will be handled during site plan review. So we'll be paying for the piping of the drainage on Pleasure House Road in front of this property as well. So we're, we're doing nothing but enhancing or lessening the cost of the CIP project when it happens, hopefully sooner than six or seven years. The, excuse me, the height of the building at 37 feet is purely for resilience. Lake Bradford is directly to the west of this property. It's not in a flood hazard zone. If it were, it would be 37 feet would be not only allowed, it would be required. And frankly, in the comp plan, there should be provision, should be recommended that that 37-foot height should be changed in all zoning districts. We allow, we tried to change it a number of years ago, and we did in all zoning districts, but it's only on subdivisions of 10 homes or greater. But to, to create the additional free board, you should have the ability to, to offset it by an additional foot or two feet in height. And that's something that is, if we're going to continue to pursue being resilient, that's something that's just needs to be done. But that's, that's the only reason for the 37-foot height on this application. The, we, we had, the Bayfront Advisory Commission's heard this, they recommended it. We spent a lot of time with the Chesapeake Beach Civic League and appreciate greatly their hospitality and they're willing to entertain us. I had a meeting with all the board, and then we had a full meeting with all the members. They have concerns based almost entirely on a rezoning for the Bonaventure Group back in 2020 or 2021 on the east side of Pleasure House, just a block south, and where that, those apartments being redeveloped, and they came in with A 36 and A 24. The Civic League was very, very much opposed. It was a split vote on council, but it was approved. They have a, a visceral reaction to anything that says A 24. And that's, this is not A 24. It's 12 units per acre, and it's completely consistent and in line with the development on both sides of Pleasure House Road in this area. The R 7.5 is the outlier, and the owner of that property deserves the opportunity to realize the value of their property by selling it for something other than one house on 25,800 square feet. Excuse me. The, I think that's about all that I think I need to say. Be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Any questions for the speaker? Commissioner Costin, just want to double check. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Camp?
Mr. Braden, could you clarify, please? As you were summarizing some of the site plan aspects, I believe you stated that your applicant is going to install the amenity that is called for with the road improvements. I'm referencing the path, but let me just ask you straightforwardly, what is the width of the path that your client intends to install at the front of this property?
It's, it's the width of the, that's in the plans, and I believe it's six feet, but I'm not certain.
That's what I wanted to hear, that it is not the five-foot sidewalk that is referenced in the staff report, which is on the other side of the street.
The intent is?
You are putting in the six-foot wide side path that is called out in the plans.
I believe that's the correct size, and whatever that correct size is, if it's bigger, it's bigger. It's, it's what's in the CIP project.
Thank you, sir.
And the same is true for the, the drainage. We just can't do it until the project is built, and so it'll be a cost participation to help the city pay for it.
I understand that, thank you. That, and city council deferred this road project. It changed a lot of issues up there, and I'm not saying that anything in the staff report is incorrect, but the summaries do not make it clear which side of the street we're talking about. I'm glad that your client is going to do the right thing on your side. Thank you.
And that's exactly what we promised the Chesapeake Beach Civic League, that we would, we would put in exactly what is in the CIP project.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker on WebEx, Kim Mayo.
Good afternoon and welcome. If you could please state your name for the record.
I'd ask her to unmute. She is unmuted.
Good afternoon, thank you for coming today. Could you please state your name for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, Ms. Mayo, thank you. Please state your name for the record, we're just waiting for you.
Good, good afternoon, Kim Mayo.
Yes, thank you, please go ahead.
Thank you. I own property very close to this proposed upzone and want to express opposition. I also serve on our District 9 Civic League and Virginia Wesleyan Alumni Council. I rarely speak to planning, so thanks for taking my comments remotely. This is a huge density change, potentially 42 people plus guests and not ample parking per the plans of 30 parking spaces is problematic. We've seen a recent influx of density at Chick's Beach. Windsong Apartments, now known as Attain Chick's Beach, 196 residential units across the street from this, still has plenty of unrented units available, and the new luxury condos nearby have also contributed to gridlock. Our sidewalks and infrastructure is not in place and flooding is a known issue. TJ Morgan and the Honorable late Councilman Lewis Jones fought against Windsong Apartments and protected our property rights, which isn't true of our current Councilman Schulman. He's not trusted by many of our residents after his role in Pleasure House Point. According to Seldif, the Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund, Josh took a campaign donation from a developer who now has water views following the clear cut of our maritime forest and over 5,000 trees. We spent $12 million, some have pointed out, to provide a water view for a developer, which seems to many financially irresponsible and potentially criminal. No elected or appointed official should reward developer donors. With uncontrolled residential development, it's also harder for landlords to rent their property. Many own just one or two properties and rely on this income. I often think of my mentor and late friend, Dr. Pat Sullivan, who was Virginia Wesleyan's first female professor and a longtime Chick's Beach resident. A developer crammed density residential all around her modest Chick's Beach condo near Bowie's Restaurant, tearing down live oaks and making it hard to even leave her driveway. She was so upset by this. We need to protect our property rights and not just rubber stamp projects. We must balance growth with preservation. These residential density projects in established suburban neighborhoods are increasing our tax bills and decreasing the quality of life for existing residents. As citizens, we need to keep showing up and make our voices heard. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Mayo. If you could please just pause for a moment if there's any questions from the commission. Commissioner Plumley?
Ms. Mayo, you said, I'd like, if you don't mind repeating for me, where you live in relation to this proposed project? You're still on?
Ms. Mayo, were you able to hear the question?
You're currently muted, Ms. Mayo. Do you mind unmuting? So my question is just, where do you live in relation to this project?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that. As I stated in my first sentence, I own property, if I were to estimate, 100 steps from the proposed development.
So in which direction, if you're facing, that lot?
Heading towards the Wawa on the corner of Shore and Pleasure House.
And that's property you own, but you do not live there? Is that fair?
If you're asking where I live, I live about a mile from the property.
I see. Do you have direct experience with flooding in that area? That's what my question is.
Yes.
Whether, can, can you describe the flooding and the location of the flooding that you've experienced? I'm talking about on the street where the proposed project is, is set.
Yes. That whole area floods. There's an apartment across the street that is prone to flooding, so there's definitely some flooding there. It's to the right of Windsong Apartments, heading towards the Wawa. Again, I don't know what direction that is, so.
And is it impassable at times when it floods?
It's the apartment community itself is prone to flooding. I don't typically drive through that parking lot, but that's where there's a lot of flooding in that parking lot.
So it's not the street, it's the apartment complex parking lot that you're talking about flooding?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? We have one more, Ms. Mayo, so please stay on the line. Commissioner Beiler?
Ms. Mayo, I understood you to say you're a member of an area civic league. Are you speaking today on behalf of that civic league, or are you speaking as an individual property owner?
As an individual. I'm on the board of our civic league, and I'm speaking as an individual. And I also recently rejoined the Chick's Beach Civic League and don't agree entirely with the attorney's representation.
In what regard do you not agree? Have either of those civic leagues brought this matter up and have they addressed it either positively or negatively, to the best of your knowledge?
I was not present at the Chick's Beach Civic League when the developer came in to present. I believe that was about two months ago, and there has been a lot of concern raised on social media by Chick's Beach residents as well as property owners. I reached out to Kami Best Jones, who I believe to be the current president of the civic league, who I believe is stepping off that board. I'm not sure if she's done so or not, and she did not return two of my messages on this topic.
Okay, so I, I understand then that the civic leagues, to the best of your knowledge, have neither supported nor opposed officially this application. But thank you.
Yes, thank you.
No further questions then for our speaker. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayo, for participating today.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what representation Ms. Mayo believes I made. I simply said we met with the civic league. I didn't make any representation. I did represent that they were mostly concerned with the A 24 zoning district, which I think is 100% accurate. The property across the street is not an apartment complex, as we talked about earlier. It's Mr. Greger's development, which is one of the more recent developments down there, although it's probably been good, good 15 years at this point since that's been there, maybe 12. She's speaking of older properties to the south towards Shore Drive in the blocks beyond the Windsong property, not, not the property across the street from this, this piece of property. This is not, these are not rentals. These are, these will be for-sale units. They will be significantly more valuable than the apartments or the, or the duplexes on the south and north. more valuable than the apartments or the duplexes on the south and north of this property on the west side of Pleasure House. The values will, the values of the properties across the street that are also for-sale on our occupied unit are much higher as well. This will, these will be every bit as valuable and have prices every bit as high as those. But we're going to handle stormwater unlike all the other properties out there, including to some degree Windsong, which because it was redevelopment, didn't have to meet the current requirements. I mean, they get reduced by 10%, etc., because redevelopment. This was basically greenfield development, and we'll have to meet the stormwater requirements, and there will be stormwater retention underneath the drive aisle in the parking lot to handle both quantity and quality. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Plumley?
Mr. Bergdahl, the request to exceed 35 feet is based upon the free board accommodation under the new regs. That was your point, I think.
Yes, that's correct. We will, if we raise the free board, we'll raise heights. If we don't, then it will be 35.
And you'd mentioned that that's part of the effort to increase the resilience of that property and its safety, etc. So there is some acceptance. There is a water body behind you. This is an issue that's of great importance to the city with regards to flooding. So you acknowledge that. That's correct.
Absolutely. We all need to acknowledge that. We need to create more resilience.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for discussion and to entertain a motion. Commissioner Costin.
I approve the item.
Second. We have a motion on the table for approval seconded, excuse me, a motion by Commissioner Costin for approval, seconded by Commissioner Schoonover. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Beiler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This application gave me a lot of concern. What I understand from our comprehensive plan, and what I try to be sensitive to, is purposeful infill development. I understand we need to develop, but we also want to respect neighborhood character and the unique neighborhood identity. The Chick's Beach area, the Pleasure House Road area, is near and dear to my heart. I went to Bayside High School, grew up in that area, and love it. It does have a unique character. I walked the property. I was very concerned about the sidewalk. There really isn't a safe area for walking up and down that street. We have Commonwealth Brewing near, and a lot of pedestrians. This is a neighborhood concentric property. I do believe that the development that has been proposed will be an asset. I do think it's in keeping with the properties and the immediate vicinity. And while I always hate to lose a little cottage in favor of multifamily, we all know we need infill development, and we need housing for people in Virginia Beach. So I will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Camp.
Prior to the applicant's changes to the proposal, I would not be supporting this application. The changes in height, the changes to the side path out front, and most importantly, the changes to the requested zoning from what I felt was a very unreasonable A-24 standard to the next most appropriate standard, A-12, that fits this, have now brought it into the area and have referenced this in prior occasions. Is it close? Well, when you're within two feet of the standard on a 35-foot standard, yes, I think you're close enough. And so today, I am prepared to support this. In the spirit of our comprehensive plan's infill development, I think that's what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mouch?
I just wanted to make sure that we're addressing all the concerns from Ms. Mayo. She did ask, or she talked about flooding mainly in the complex across the way, not necessarily the street, is what I heard. And then the traffic pressures. We do have that CIP to address those concerns. It'd be wonderful if we could allow for that to happen sooner rather than later, but that's outside of our control. She did address the parking issue, and I just want to clarify with staff, is the parking plan appropriate for this property?
The parking plan proposed meets our regulation, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then just one comment, maybe, I know it's very difficult, but I think that we should probably try to intend on keeping the comments addressed towards the application and maybe not so much towards personal attacks and accusations. I don't think that that's acceptable. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? The vote is open. We have a motion on the table for approval from Commissioner Costin and seconded by Commissioner Schoonover.
Per recorded vote of 10 to 0, Item 7, Brakel LLC, has been recommended for approval. Our next item is Item 9, Courtney Ebron.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Ma'am, why don't you go ahead and get settled there at the podium, if you could put the mic down a little closer to you. And if you would please state your name for the record. When the green light, when the green light goes on, you can start speaking. And then just so you're aware, yellow, you're getting close to the end of your time, and when the red light goes on, your time is end. So thank you for being here today, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of council, planning commission, and community members. My name is Courtney Ebron, founder and director of New Horizons Youth Group Home. I want to start by thanking everyone who took the time to write letters or speak today. I understand why some of you are concerned. Words like "group home" can stir fear, fear of the unknown, fear of change, fear of what could happen if things go wrong. I get it. But I want to share with you today is, in theory or numbers, is experience, lived experience. My goal is to replace uncertainty with clarity. This home is not a correctional or detention facility. It is a licensed small-scale residential program designed for up to six youth males ages 7 to 17, who simply need a safe, structured place to live while working towards stability and reunification. All staff are fully background-checked, fingerprinted, and trained in trauma-informed care, CPR, and first aid, as required by the Virginia Department of Social Services. Residents are supervised 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. There is no unsupervised activity in or around the home, no wandering or no disruption. Our traffic will be minimal, similar to any large family home. Staff work in shifts to avoid congestion, and parking is limited to the driveway. Visitors such as family members or caseworkers come only by appointment during daytime hours. There will be no public drop-ins or large gatherings. I read concerns about property values and fully understand them. Research shows that licensed and well-managed residential programs do not reduce surrounding property values. Our home will be clean, quiet, and maintained to the same or higher standard as any house in this neighborhood. We want this home to reflect pride, care, and safety from the outside in. This is a new group home, but it is built on experience, care, and compliance. My drive to open this home doesn't come from a business plan. It comes from experience, family. I have a cousin, a kid at the time, who was caught up in the juvenile system. I watched my aunt, a strong, independent woman, do everything in her power to advocate for him. She searched programs, mentors, and placements that could truly help, not just punish him. Resources were limited or none. The system focused on correction, not prevention, and that's what I want to change. I have partnered with mentors, program consultants, and other established providers to ensure New Horizons meet the highest standards from day one. Being new doesn't mean I'm prepared. It means we are bringing fresh energy, modern training, and a deep commitment to doing things right from the start. We believe no person is too far gone, too broken, or too lost to find their way to hope. Our mission is simple yet profound, to empower youth to rise above their circumstances, discover their worth, and create a life they can be proud of. Every boy who walks through our doors becomes a part of a family that refuses to give up on him. We will be a responsible neighbor, a transparent partner, and a stable presence in this community. If any issue arises, I will personally respond. I appreciate staff recommendation for approval and your trust in allowing New Horizons to open its doors and provide care to change lives for the better. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ebron. Now, there might be a few questions. Commissioner Costin? Commissioner Plumley?
Yes, Ms. Ebron, can you tell us what efforts you've made to talk to the neighbors about your plans? And I'm particularly interested about the home immediately part of the structure. The way this is laid out, there are two condos side by side, two living homes side by side?
Yes.
And what's been your interaction with the neighbor, immediate neighbor?
When I first got lease of the property, the landlord introduced us. Everything appeared to be fine. The sign was placed out there for a month. It was nothing up until two weeks ago, I want to state. She kept trying to state that I was the previous tenant who resided there, and I have nothing to do with the previous tenant who resided there. From my understanding, it was a lot of people who lived there. I don't want to speak too much on that because I don't know the previous tenant, and I didn't have nothing to do with it. But I tried to explain my purpose and that I wasn't the tenant, but she was dead set, like I belonged with the people that weren't at home.
So just to be clear, the woman that said that is the one that lives immediately adjacent? Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, I just make sure I understand where they live. And so she is opposed to this plan. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. And were you able to meet with other members of the community and talk about your plan?
It was a few members I did meet with. I did a lot of public outreach via social media, because a lot of people weren't too okay with, you know, strangers walking in their yards and whatnot. So then I didn't want to cause any commotion more there, so I reverted it to public outreach. I did get pretty good percentage of people supportive, and it was people that still wasn't supportive.
Okay. And you may be asked some other questions by others, but I wanted to know also, you said this was based on a personal experience, and you described that made you, that want to go into this, providing this type of service. Can you tell us what type of experience in the past that you've had, giving, you know, providing this type of service in a community?
I've dealt with, I guess you could say, it was a letter written from someone who I did help coming up, you know, helped him along the way, found him resources and whatnot so that he could stay free and become productive from chance on wings. A lot of it, like I say, is product of environment, helped those who were around me.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hippen?
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming out. So I read that you did try and knock on doors. I was in the neighborhood yesterday.
Yes.
Okay, specifically.
I saw you on the ring camera. I just didn't know who you were.
Okay. I had my badge on. So I know that there is a Virginia Beach policeman that lives right across the street.
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay. You said, when you spoke, up to six.
Yes.
In residents, yet your application says up to eight.
Up to eight is Virginia standards, but discussed with my landlord is six.
Six, okay. So two per bedroom?
Yes.
Okay. And I am going to assume that the people, the staff that you will have on board will be like three eight-hour shifts type of thing?
Yes.
And how many will you have in the unit?
On each shift?
Yes.
It will be two to three residential takes on each shift.
Okay. So what security measures, because the people I talked to were concerned about security, what security measures will you be taking for the unit?
The facility with the residential place, it will be surveillance 24/7. We have 24/7 operation security, and they will also be searched, day in and day out.
Okay. Can you specifically state the security measures, please? So you said you saw me on the Ring doorbell?
Yes, ma'am, I did. This is, so far, with the safety measures that I have implemented, it comes from my staff, they're all background-checked, they're all fingerprinted. Two of them wear whole security, like a security badge or what have you, so that they can do the searches and what have you. We have training for de-escalation. In any event that all of those fail, then yes, immediate action or removal will take place.
Okay. Will you have any type of alarm system or something? Because, I mean, it's a home.
The whole home is alarm system. If they go to the door, it alerts me. A window's touched, it alerts me.
Okay. What's my other one? Two, three staff. Now, you said your experience in this area is personal experience dealing with someone. So your experience as a practitioner in this role is minimal. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
So why do you feel that this is going to work in that particular neighborhood?
I mean, I chose this neighborhood because it's safe, it's stable, and it's a residential environment. A lot of times, these kids feel like they don't belong, and when you ask them, they'll, you know, give reasons like this. People look at them funny when they're in certain places. They can't go certain places without being harassed, this, that, or the third. My goal was to put them in an environment they can thrive from, set somewhere safe, stable. And I just felt as though the area was a good area. Sorry. The area was a good area, and the schools as well were a good area. It was quiet. Transportation and other essential needs for them also was very close in proximity.
Okay. What is the length of stay for most kids, or what's an average length of stay?
Say that one more time.
What is an average length of stay?
30 days.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's the questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schoonover.
I just had a quick question, and it's no reflection on my voting. It all is more curiosity, because I understand that a lot of trouble comes from fatherless homes. I was curious if any of your staff were male as well?
You said any of them.
Are any of the members of your staff male? I was just curious if there'd be a father figure.
Yeah, yes.
Pure curiosity. Thank you.
Commissioner Camp?
Hi, I have a couple of questions. I want to sort out, what else? Some of the organizations that are mentioned here. Help me understand them.
Okay.
So you are the applicant today seeking the action before us, you personally, in your name?
Yes.
Who is applying to Social Services for the license to run the group home?
That would be me as well.
Personally, not New Horizons?
No, it would be New Horizons, yes, my company.
Your company is applying for the license from Social Services?
Yes.
Who is on the lease in this property?
New Horizons.
New Horizons is the tenant. New Horizons is going to be providing the services?
Yes.
What is your relation to New Horizons?
Owner.
Are you the only owner?
Yes.
Now I understand.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mouch?
Hi, thank you for coming in. Couple of questions for you. Do you currently reside at the property now? And if so, do you intend on staying at the property through the period in which year?
No, sir, I do not reside at the property, but I will be there majority of the time.
Okay. And then going back to the safety, is it your intention to have any security cameras? I think one of the main concerns that we had from neighbors and residents of the area was safety and security. So I'm just trying to address some of that.
Yes. Yes, it's cameras outside of the home, and cameras are in a process of being installed on the inside.
Okay, and is it your intent if there's any issues, whether it be in the neighborhood, not associated with anything, but to be able to offer up some of the security footage if needed?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Costin?
I kind of understand how people feel about having facilities like this in their area, but from experience, they are very well-run. I've seen the gentlemen, when they come in, they get searched for any kind of contraband, even cigarettes, you know, all that stuff. I think I have a hard time, but as someone said, they have to be someplace. So if everybody's ready, if...
Well, we have some speakers, so we have some speakers, so if you can just pause for a moment, thank you. Just any other questions at this time, or Ms. Abrahan? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have a total of six speakers. And starting with opposition, we have Beverly Garris, followed by Daniel A. Bell.
Pardon me, Madam Clerk, did you just say ten?
Six.
Six, okay, just want to make sure, thank you.
Can I ask everyone to speak very distinctly and a little more loudly, because I'm having trouble hearing folks?
Welcome, yes, the first speaker. Thank you for being here today, and just for the benefit of the speakers, I just wanted to make everyone aware that when the green light goes on, that's when your time will start, and then at yellow, it's coming closer to the end, and then at the red light, your time has ended. And if you could please state your name for the record.
My name is Beverly Garris.
Thank you.
I am six houses down on Rugby Road from the potential home. I want to thank you all for calling me first.
You're welcome.
In 2020, I lost my husband. My sons and I researched, along with the realtor of a good, safe neighborhood to be in. My youngest son had purchased a home on Rugby Road, so I was familiar with the neighborhood. I'm not scared of the unknown, but this is my, this is my future, this is my home. I spoke with the realtor that worked with me, and I know that there is a problem with sometimes reselling the value of your home. People are scared, so that kind of narrows down the buying pool. Like I said, this is my future, I'm a widow, this is all I have. The other concerns are traffic. All these children that will be there will have to be taking places for their rehab or whatever it is they're going through. If you've ever driven on that road, Ms. Susan's been on that road, you're navigating in and out of cars. There's, right in that area, one day for fun, my grandsons and I counted 200 geese in a row right there. So there's a lot of traffic issues right there on that road, and you can't tell me that there's not going to be more traffic with this home there. My other concerns are, it doesn't really sound like this is an established business. I do understand your comment, that it has to be somewhere. I'm not that person that says, no, not my neighborhood, somewhere else, but I am that person that it's got to be responsible. This home does not seem responsible, safe, there's no experience. I don't understand the comments she made about a badge. What does that mean with security? What's a badge? You know, I didn't understand that. There's no, there's no places for these kids to play. She said they were going to be supervised constantly, and then on the other hand, she wanted them to be in an environment where they can be in the community. Which is it, you know? The character of our neighborhood will be changed, whether I like it or not, and I do appreciate, you know, you guys listening to my concerns. I don't know what else to say, out of words, and I have time. But I moved in that home with the zoning the way it was, and I don't think it's fair to me and for my children and my grandchildren, who will be inheriting my house when I'm gone, or if I have to resell it to go into a living, you know, assisted place, that the value of what I have will be gone. And I think that the lady that lives next door to her, that attached house, I want to speak out for her. I don't know her, but she lives right there, it'll be right on top of her, and if it's approved, she won't have any say about it at all, so.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Anyway, thank you.
I appreciate that. And just pause for a moment in the event that the commissioner has a question. Commissioner Plumley?
Yes, it's Ms. Harris, correct?
Uh, Garris.
Garris, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay. So you live six houses down, so that photo that we're looking at faces the home, going which direction, to the right or left?
If I'm standing in front of that, it'll be to the left.
And, yeah, now I went down that street, there's kind of a turn that comes...
A curve, I'm right down the curve.
And you're in that curve, that part of it? Did you know the people that lived there before, in that particular house?
I did not know their names or know them. I saw them, I saw the children out there.
Do you know how many people lived there before?
I saw maybe four kids, I guess. I cannot give you an honest statement on that.
I appreciate that.
I really can't.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garris.
Ms. Garris?
Yes.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Yes, sorry. You must live on, are you on the other side of the street?
I'm on the same side of the street as the house.
Okay, because I spoke with the gentleman that's got the wood shop in his house.
Yes, on the left, yes.
Yes, okay, okay, so I know where you are.
Couple houses up on the right from him.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel A. Bell, followed by Gene DiLorenzo.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
I don't know where my head's at. My name is Daniel Allen Bell. I'm a resident at 4953 Rugby Road, and I just got a few questions and got a couple things to add. So I'll start. Thank you for allowing me to attend and speak today. It was kind also of consideration of a representative to speak to me yesterday, one-on-one. Thank you for that. Despite this meeting being held mid-work week and mid-workday, even as a hard-working resident of Rugby Road, where this project is solicited for, it felt important to express my opinion, much of which have been mirrored by my neighbors on the same street, that were unable to attend today due to their work schedule. We all have natural concerns on our safety as residents, our property value, and the sellability if we choose to move one day. No one disputes that of the many neighbors of the prospective property at 5004 Rugby Road that I have conferred with. It goes deeper than that. I have been there for 10 years, my wife 20. If I may begin with this, I address the location in question is in a blind, near a blind corner right after it, with most residents already forced to utilize street parking due to single-car driveways, there is often incidences or collisions or near collisions in this corner. I would like to know the consider for parking, because vehicles will have to be there. Myself have had vehicles totaled on that road, broad daylight, so it's the geese and the cars and everything else. You know, would these kids, would this address even home the children, would this address ever home children that are violent or accused of sexual offenses? The children of Bridle Creek Rugby Road, Oaknall, Sweet Bay Lane, and Sangree Circle Development already have troubled use to a degree. I feel, I feel for them the most, and that is what I'm mostly here for. What protection will be put in place, which they have somewhat answered to a degree? What sort of element are these children, you know, what are they going through in life? I understand the Privacy Act and all that good stuff, but, you know, as a neighbor, I think we should know, you know, what's going on. What would the house be designated for, to zone for later if this doesn't work out? You know, that's another thought that came to my mind. What's the time limit for these young men to turn around? What are, what do they plan on doing? What are visiting hours? I'm not casting shade on these young men, but we are temporary, they are temporary, we own homes here. Lastly, we all must consider the street-dwelling federally protected Canadian geese and plus the Muskogee and Mallard ducks that heavily frequent this specifically, that very address and spot on the same side of the road, other areas of Rugby Road as well. Those are very well, those are my street, no, I'm sorry, I have a problem with reading out loud, I'm very well verb, but I...
It's quite all right, you're doing a great job.
Okay, those on my street are very well patient, and exhibit the pass them safely. There's, as true traffic almost runs 35 miles an hour down that road on a regular basis, let alone near a blind spot, increased traffic adds concern for those that are there. Thank you for hearing me out today, and I hopefully, you know, this can be addressed. I gave everyone of y'all a copy of that as well, and if the plan, planner, the owner decides that they want a copy of it, they can have a copy of it as well. It has my name and my address on there, but that's all I have to say about that today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bell, for being here today, and we'll pause for a moment, should another commissioner have a question.
Thank you for opening the door yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
You were very well spoken when we spoke. I guess the only questions I had for you are, you stated a lot of things, I believe, we talked, well, now I'm at a loss for words.
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about your concerns for security, we talked about your concerns for the lack of experience in this area.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware that a policeman lives down the street from you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
He lives across the street.
Yes, yes. I think that was the only question I had, but I did want to thank you for opening the door yesterday.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for coming by.
Any other questions for Mr. Bell? Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, God bless that.
Our next speaker is Gene DiLorenzo, followed by Rafael Barahars. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Gene DiLorenzo. I just heard about this two days ago, so I haven't had much time to, like, get involved, but I felt the need to come over here and speak up. I've been in the neighborhood since 2008, and just recently I have, like, gotten more engaged, wanting to be focused on the neighborhood itself, and I don't think it would be appropriate to have a facility like this. I just ask each member to, like, picture that, having, living in a neighborhood that has transitional kids, you know, on disposition. I get it, it is the right thing to do, it is the moral thing to do, absolutely, but it's the right setting. At night, it is much more narrow, because there's a lot more traffic. During the day, it looks great, at night, there's a lot more traffic. It is not as well-lit as other areas. It is a one-mile loop. That area is actually the worst area within the one-mile loop within Rugby Road. Yes, we do have a police presence in the front. It is not fair for us to ask of him to police it 24 hours, and again, that area is not the best suited for this facility. We talked about staff, so we're talking about more traffic, more parking. Said kids will, they'll be there for about 30 days, so if, let's say, we're doing this the right thing, and they're changing or whatever, but then there's going to be another issue, more drama, more situations, carrying whatever, visiting hours or whatever, there's going to be drama. It's going to change the character, I've heard that a lot of times already. It's going to change the dynamic of the neighborhood. It is a young neighborhood where people who move in are young families, so it's going to change that idea of, like, do you really want to move into this neighborhood? Because most people live here for three to five years, and then they move on, right? Yeah. I just ask to please think about you living in this area. I'm not trying to, property values, for me, it's not that, because I'm making this my home, I'm making this my forever home. And as so, I've had issues, like, every spring or summer, when their kids are out of school, you have kids walking around the neighborhood, and cool, if they're only there for 30 days, what happens afterwards? Are they canvassing? My car's been broken into before, they just go through, I have footage, but then what happens? It's not like we're going to go over there, and they're not released, oh, this is, was this individual you see? You know, they're not going, you know, if you have security there, great, but what happens to the surrounding area? It's not like you're, they're going to have access to all this. And then, again, it's this brand-new company, where are they getting the funding? It's a business. At the end of the day, it's a business. So do you want to have a business in your neighborhood?
Thank you very much, Mr. DiLorenzo. Commissioner Hippen, and then Commissioner Plumley?
How close to 5,000 for...
About 10 houses to the right of that house.
So you're...
Towards the right.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Mr. DiLorenzo, you said that the lighting in that area is poor.
Yes.
So there's not a street lamp, you know?
There is a street light, but because of the foliage of the area, it is not, you know, there's plenty of shadows to be cast along the way, and, you know, it's every seven houses or so, and it's alternating, but that curve right there is, I avoid that curve. I purposely go before it to get to the main roads.
I take it that in the evening, their cars parked along the road?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then also, like, we talked about, like, for kids, there is not a near park. The nearest park is going to be in Pleasant Valley and across the street in Ling Heaven, so they're going to be in front. That's why I avoid that area, too, because there's, the previous tenants had kids in there, and it was just chaos.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Rafael Barahars, followed by Val Roy Williams.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
If you could please state your name for the record?
Yes, it's Rafael Barahars, resident of 4993 Rugby Road. All right, so biggest concern I have with this is the lack of experience. My primary concern is the safety of my children. I have a four-year-old and a 15-year-old. Speaking from firsthand experience with these youth group homes, especially since it's not a disability situation, this is just kids that are troubled, bad backgrounds, poor nuclear families. A lot of the time, the first thing they jump into is, what kind of trouble can we get into? Because that's where they find that fun. From what I can hear with the company owner, is that they don't have the experience to run something like this safely. Now, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, I'm opposed to the lack of experience running an operation like this, or a company or a business like this. I would simply ask is, if you are in our situation, I don't care about property values. They go up, they go down, taxes go up, they go down, but when it comes to the safety of other kids in the area, a lot of these kids don't have the self-restraint, because they didn't have a father figure there. They don't. We'll be real about it. I'm not here to sugarcoat anything, but the fact of the matter is, I think that this is a bad idea, strictly based off the lack of experience. Who's licensed? Who's going to be keeping an eye on them? She's talking about security detail. Okay, well, what's to say that these guys aren't going to get rambunctious? Now, you're cramming a bunch of kids, troubled pass, in one house, it's 1,500 square feet at best, in three bedrooms? My two older brothers didn't get along, and they have their own bedrooms. So what makes you think that a bunch of these kids dealing with the issues that they're dealing with, who are trying to find themselves, figure out how to deal with these issues, aren't going to be able to control themselves, control their emotions? What's to say one of these kids doesn't just barge out of the house with no regard... What's to say one of these kids doesn't just barge out of the house with no regard for whoever's supposed to be keeping an eye on the facility? My daughter's out there playing with her friend who's five years old down the street or right across, well, right next door to us, and something happens. Then everybody keeps bringing up my neighbor, Scott Lewis, police officer, and I don't think I've ever seen a day where that guy's had the chance to decompress. I don't think we've ever had a conversation, we didn't tell me we had to respond to a suicide or we had to respond because somebody wrapped their car around the tree and I was up till 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. Just goes to say it's not fair for us to go and harass this guy to keep an eye on them. Not to mention the horror stories he's told me of having to respond to situations, domestic situations at houses like this. I think there's more involved than just, hey, let me start it now, we'll see and try to take care of kids who are troubled. It's a lot more work than just, here's a room, here's food, here's a room board. There has to be thoughtful planning to make something like this successful and it's just not there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just pause for a moment in case the commissioner has a question. Yes, Commissioner Beiler and then Commissioner Hippen.
First, I'd like to thank you for your service to our great country and thank you for being here today. I have to assume this was a hardship, a sacrifice for you to come down to the municipal center this afternoon, wait all day to let your voice be heard. I appreciate it. Um, I want to make you aware that the way the process works, if this application is granted, it doesn't specifically go to the applicant. It goes, it runs with the property, with the address. So whether she's there or someone else is there, the conditional use permit runs with that address. Does that change your thoughts or your comments?
Um, no, I'd still feel the same way. Because at the end of the day, just like when I was at SEAL Team Two, if you didn't have good leadership, you weren't successful. And it's just a huge trickle-down effect. So it doesn't matter if the cup stays with the property, somebody else has it running, they don't have the experience to run something like this successfully. You're just going to have a bunch of kids coming through who aren't going to benefit the way they should.
Well, I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard you say your basis for opposing it was lack of experience. So if this particular person isn't there running it, maybe the next one would have more experience. Would that change your opinion of it? Would you think it's a good idea to have it there if someone perhaps with more experience and a track record were there?
That potentially could swing it.
Again, thank you.
Commissioner Hippen.
Well, Shippa, thank you for taking the time to come down here. You were probably on duty when I was walking around, okay?
Probably.
I'm retired Navy. So I know it wasn't that hard for you to get off. I know better. Um, how far, tell me again where you, what, you, you mentioned your address at the beginning, did you not?
Yes.
Say it again, please.
My neighbor Scott Lewis, the police officer with the.
Yes.
Vehicle.
Okay, so I know where you are.
With the Mustang and the Nova and all the.
Yes, okay, then I know exactly where you are. Okay, um, that's pretty much it. She answered, she asked you the question that I was going to ask. So that was, that was, I just wanted to know where in, you know, where you are in connection with that dwelling. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Barahars. Our next speaker is Val Roy Williams, followed by our last speaker, Towanda Bolton. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay, I'm using, I'm going to re-read from this because, uh, as a retired first sergeant, I kind of meander on and I don't want to do that today.
All right, please start by stating your name for the record.
Sure.
Your, the lights will guide you.
My name is Dr. Val Roy Williams. Okay, and I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to address the commission and all that are in attendance. I've been the owner of 5004 Rugby Road since March of 1993. It was my first home and I lived there for about 10 years. During that time, I served as a foster parent. I worked for CSUP and I worked for Norfolk Psych. Good. Uh, for nearly, for the nearly 20 years, I have rented the home to responsible tenants. I am proud to share that five of my eight tenants went on to purchase or build their own homes after living at 5004 Rugby Road. The most recent tenant, who was the only tenant on Section Eight, okay, was one of the three tenants whose lease I chose not to renew. After a six-month process, I successfully resolved the situation. Notably, during that time, I received no complaints from the neighbors and the tenant herself told me she was on friendly terms with the, those living on either side of the property. Over the, the past two decades, I have continuously upgraded and renovated the home and maintained it to enhance its value. I take great pride in its upkeep and in ensuring that it remains a positive part of the community. I am genuinely enthusiastic about the proposal for New Horizons Youth Group Home. As someone who holds a master's degree in guidance and counseling from Norfolk State, I have seen firsthand as a foster parent, and as I said, working at Norfolk Psych, that the youth need a structured, safe and supportive environment, in particularly in Virginia Beach. Currently, I host youth from a local group home at my farm in Red Springs, North Carolina. And it gives me the opportunity to kind of help them with personal growth and development. With 24-hour supervision and professional development services, I believe that New Horizons Youth Group Home will provide the structure and care that can make a profound and positive difference for the youth it services. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. We have a question from Commissioner Plumley and then Commissioner Hippen.
Dr. Williams, um, you've owned the property since, I think you said 94. Is that correct?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, sorry. The, um, immediately adjoining neighbor.
Yes.
Can you tell us about your relationship with them? How long have they been in that location?
Yeah, they've been at location for about, about six years. Uh, the, the owner is Navy, right? And I know his girlfriend moved in a little bit afterwards and I know, I've heard now that she's opposed, but I know she was very good friends with my previous tenant. Previous tenant, and I bring that up only because the previous tenant was not the best, okay? And I was kind of surprised during that period of time that there were no complaints. Okay? It was the first time I did Section Eight and I thought that by doing Section Eight, there would be a lot of oversight. There really wasn't, okay? The house was inspected, again, it passed inspection every time, but it was not up to my or the community standards. And I, I can definitely attest to that, okay? But it took, again, six months to get to.
And, and the prior tenant was at least one adult and four children? Was that the?
Yeah, I've heard different stories. The rental was four children, okay? But I've heard that, um, there was quite, quite a bit more, okay? And I, it's just, I'm sorry, I just don't, I've, I've worked with the, I'm probably a little more familiar with the group home setting than I am with the Section Eight. And that's why I probably won't do, won't do it again. But, um, there were supposedly a lot of people living there.
Have you rented? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but have you rented to group homes in the past?
No, never.
Okay.
Never. And the reason that this is even occurring, I, uh, I usually have no issues renting the home. It usually takes me 24 hours to rent that home, okay? It's, it's in a great location. I mean, it's right on the water, it's fenced, the, um, security system that, um, that they spoke about and everything else, that's something that I installed. There's three cameras, you can see everything, it's monitored 24 hours a day and that transfers from tenant to tenant. So a lot of people are really happy. There's motion lights outside, there's motion lights inside, all provided by me and maintained by me per the, per the lease. So there's really never a problem. When the young lady, when she came to me, New Horizons came to me and everything else and they, they approached me and my wife about this, I just thought it was just phenomenal. I, I really did. I just thought that because of the fact that it was a fenced yard, that again, all the security features and everything else that are there, I just said, you know, this, this could really work and it could make a difference. You know, when my foster son was there, I, I, I really, I got a, a feel for the foster care system in Tidewater. And these children need somewhere, they really do, and they need that, that home setting. It makes a big difference between Norfolk Psych and home.
Was it correct? I think it was stated that the home is 1,500 square feet. Is that accurate?
Yes, it's, um, 1,537 square.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner.
This retired Master Chiefs appreciate you speaking up so we could all hear what you said.
Thank you. I thank you for your service.
Thank you for yours. Um, so Sergeant Major, I did speak to some of your neighbors. Uh, I, I am the commissioner for that district. Uh, I did speak to a couple of your neighbors that were not very happy with your previous tenant. Um, so that, that is, that was an issue that may be carrying on to this young lady's endeavor. So you do not live in the state?
No, I do not.
Okay, so, so do you, and, and I want to reiterate what another commissioner stated. Do you understand that we are actually giving your property this conditional you, uh, use and it is not hers to take with her somewhere else?
I understand.
You, you do understand that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that is a concern of some of the folks that I spoke with. Um, that, that if she folds, you could just do another one there. Now, I am familiar with group home, a, a set of group homes here in Virginia Beach. And, and I know that they are in residential area. Um, I know that where you are has good schools, Salem High School, uh, Salem Middle School, uh, I think Glenwood Elementary is the elementary school or, or.
That's where my son went to.
Okay, okay. Um, so, so I understand the allure here. Um, and you're not concerned about the fact that this is just beginning as an LLC, that there's no experience here?
No, I'm not. And I'll tell you why. Because of the fact of the oversight, okay? This is, again, Section Eight, there was very little oversight, okay? Which is something I did not, I really didn't understand, because when they first came to my home, they said, hey, we're, we're going to inspect and they checked all these different things. And even though I thought I was in outstanding shape, I had to fix some things and everything else for them. This, you have people coming into the home all the time. These, these children are not going to be there for any long period of time. So the idea is for them to come in, be assessed, and then sent to places where it best meets their needs. So I, I'm not really, I, I'm not concerned so much about the oversight. I know that the property has to be maintained and it has to be maintained in an excellent condition, okay? Which is, didn't happen with the prior tenants. And I'm, I, I feel sad for her because in the, in the sense that I know that a lot of my neighbors, and I understand what you guys are saying, I really, really do, right? They look at what happened with that past tenant and I'm telling you, it took me six months to get her out. Six months, okay? It was not easy. And I come up here all the time, one of, quite a few of my prior tenants actually have homes in Virginia Beach now, which I, I thank God for, right? And my sister lives in Suffolk. So I'm up here regardless, at least every other month, I come up to the area. So I saw some things and I was like, what is going on here? You know what I mean? But most of the time, I wouldn't see anyone in the front. I didn't realize what was going on behind the fences.
Okay.
Which is unfortunate.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So that's all the questions I have for you. Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Camp and then Commissioner Mouch.
Yes, Doctor. A couple of questions. You own the property and you are leasing to New Horizons LLC?
Yes, sir.
And could you describe for us the term of that lease, the length of it?
Yes, it's, she has a three-year lease, okay? And it's no more than two, uh, two occupants of each bedroom, okay? So there's four total bedrooms in the home. One is going to be used as an office. So she has a maximum of six children. Six children with two adults 24 hours a day. A lot of supervision.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'm going to reserve comment for after.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mouch.
Commissioner Camp addressed my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Williams, I have one quick question for you. You made reference in your comments about your experience with group homes.
Yes.
And the need in Virginia Beach. Do you have a sense of how many group homes there are in the city of Virginia Beach?
You know, no, I do not. Not, I, currently, no, I do not. I know that when I worked for Norfolk Psych, we probably had, probably a total of about 10 in the entire area. I don't know what's going on now.
Like 10 in Hampton Roads?
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about in Virginia Beach, in the Virginia Beach area. And again, I'd have to say Virginia Beach, Chesapeake area. I'd have to include them both together.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out today.
You're very welcome.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our last and final speaker is Towanda Bolton.
Hello. Hi, how are you?
Right, you could just pull the mic down so we can hear you more clearly, please, and then state your name for the record.
Um, my name is Towanda Bolton and I am the owner, proprietor of Sapphires LLC in Norfolk, Virginia. I, Sapphires is a small business catering business in Norfolk, Virginia. I am the aunt of Courtney E. Bryan. And the reason why I'm here, up here today is because, number one, what she did not address is that her mother inspired her to be where she is today. Her mother has been in the, um, group home setting for over 20 years. The only reason why she's not here today is because she, um, she's working and man, mandating, she worked in, uh, the city of Chesapeake as well as the city of Portsmouth right now. And, um, she has an extensive background, which she will be, um, giving her, you know, her experiences with it and assisting where she can. I will assist her as well because of my catering business. I will be able to provide a service for balanced meals, um, predicated with, you know, the standards and specifications and guidelines of Virginia. And so with that, I think banning together is what she needs to assist her along this path to be great. She's a very caring person. She, sometimes I felt like she, her arms or extension went too far with, um, assisting kids in the, in her community and, and, and whatnot, but she always wanted to see them do well. And even though she may not have the extensive background that everybody may be looking for, she has the heart. And that's why I'm up here today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bolton. Are there any questions for our speaker?
You said you're her.
Aunt.
Aunt, okay, that's what I thought, okay. Auntie's rule.
Ms. Bolton, I just had a question. Thank you for coming down today as well as for your letter. Um, you indicated, do you have a catering business?
Yes.
Are you planning then to be offering meals and like support? What does that look like for, um.
Right now, I do.
The organization?
Right now, I do meal plans for, um, for Norfolk State, Hampton University and for their, um, family members and whatnot. And I extend, um, I, in hopes to extend that same craft for her.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. That's it?
That's it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I just want to double check, um, Madam Clerk, that was our last speaker? That was our last speaker. Okay, um, Ms. Hebron, you now have the opportunity to come back and speak for a few more minutes. This would be a rebuttal to the speakers that were here.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple more questions as well.
My aunt pretty much just said it all, but.
Thank you.
Okay, my aunt, she just pretty much said it all. I don't have the experience that, you know, the extensive experience that some people may be looking for, but as she stated, I have a heart and I feel as though that's what a lot of these kids need. It's too many kids overlooked, frowned upon and dismissed due to circumstances that they had no control of. And I'm just here trying to be the change to make a difference in our communities.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hebron. Commissioner Hippen, you indicated you had a few questions.
Okay, so some, some things have been brought to light. Um, how close to the property do you live?
I live across the street. It's Rugby on this side of Pleasant Valley. I live in the Glenwood area of Pleasant Valley.
Okay, I know exactly where you are, okay. Let me see. Well, this business have, so my familiarity with the group home, this is why I'm asking you some of these things. Will you have a vehicle specifically designated for the group home?
Yes. It would be, it would be through transportation services. I'm in the process of networking with a transportation service. They'll be need, they'll need transportation to and from school and to like any medical appointments or something to that degree. In the future, I'm working on the company's own transportation for our own personal, you know, outings and different things. But it will be a transportation service set up right now for them to get to and from the school and to like medical appointments and things to that degree.
Okay, and I ask that specifically because I know of two group homes here in Virginia Beach, and they have their own van.
Yeah.
And the kids caught the bus to and from school. Listening to some of the neighbors, how, you heard every neighbor that came up was in opposition.
Yes.
So listening to those neighbors, what do you, what can you say to them for us to say yes to this? Does that make sense? Did that question make sense?
Yes, pretty much what I've already explained. I'm just looking for a chance to give these kids hope. At the end of the day, the word group home, people hear it and automatically revert to negativity. The children coming, I mean, the kids that I have, it's not just juvenile delinquents or anything to that degree. Kids coming from foster care, children with CPS or DMS, and those aren't bad children. As you know, society may want to paint them. Every child coming through the group home is not juvenile delinquent. It's not coming from courts. It doesn't pertain to behavioral issues. A lot of these children that I will get foster care. Children being thrown from house to house in a foster care system, just trying to get them stability and again, hope. Now, there may be a kid who comes from juvenile, but none of them will be violent offenders. And by no means am I taking any juvenile with sexual offenses.
Okay, so now, it was stated that their stay will be 30 days. I find that a little short. I would think that you might have.
That's the minimum.
Oh, that's the minimum they will stay there, okay. They could stay there a lot longer.
Yes.
All right. I want to make sure I asked all the questions I had. The security measures question has been answered since now we know that there is a security system there. Cameras inside and outside. I think I got it all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Plumley?
Ms. Hebron, so tell me, the children that stay at the home, are these federally subsidized stays? Is the federal government paying for their stay at these locations?
Yes.
So these are federal funds are coming, is that correct?
Yes, I haven't reached that part as of yet because.
You have to have a place and you have to apply and then you have to. Is there a requirement that you have six children in order to qualify?
No.
Okay, so you could have fewer children and still potentially qualify? Because I do have concerns about the size of this particular home being only 1,500 square feet for that number of children that you're proposing. And second, I have to tell you, the most troubling aspect of it is, yeah. And there are a lot of troubled kids already living in this neighborhood. I'll guarantee you that, okay? So where, the fact they're put into a home and cared for is actually a very good thing. But what concerns me is the immediate neighbor is not supporting this project. And I have to consider the fact that this has sort of landed on them. And I'm wrestling with that. Do you know who they are and, you know?
No, I haven't got totally there yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Camp and then Commissioner Beiler, Commissioner Mouch.
Hi again.
Hello.
I want to understand a statement that I think I heard you say earlier, and maybe you can help clear it up for me. The application before us would allow you to have as many as eight children in the home. That's what it says on the paper that we have.
Yeah, that's Virginia Department of Social Services, that's their standard. However, it will be six max. That's what me and my landlord agreed upon.
That's where I'm going. You and your landlord may have agreed to something, but what's here before us today to decide what to do with is a request for eight. That's different than what I heard your landlord say and what I thought I heard you said. Commissioner Plumley asked you a question about the federal financing behind it. I want to ask you a little different question. For this business to work, you have to have enough revenue coming in to pay the expenses. Your staff, the rent, all those things. If you had fewer children in the home, does the business model still work? Do the finances still work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon again. So my question is regarding the lease. Because there's a lot of overlap here between the landlord and the operator. And it concerns me, as Commissioner Plumley pointed out, that you don't live there and you have not apparently made acquaintance with the adjacent property owner and the other half of this duplex, if you will. So if the application is not approved, does the lease fall? Is the lease contingent upon this approval? Or have you already outfitted it and put the beds in and gotten ready to operate?
Yes, ma'am. It's furnished.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mouch?
Ms. Hebron, thank you for coming back up and answering some more questions. When the previous speakers came up, I kind of identified a lot of the concerns that they may have. I'm just going to go through the list, and I do have a couple of questions for them. So traffic being one, experience of the operator, safety, property value, conditional use to stay with the property, visiting hours, and visibility with overgrowth of trees for the lighting in that area. Let's, if I could, what, just because for my knowledge and maybe for the knowledge of other commissioners, what type of training is required to operate this type of facility from the state?
CPR first, first aid, like trauma-informed trainings?
In order to, yeah, in order to operate a facility, what type of training is actually required?
Trauma-informed, like TOVA is one of them that I'm looking into, which is the training for de-escalations, to de-escalate a situation. Of course, I have to go through like fire inspections and all of that. Health inspection and orders to that degree as well.
Okay, are there any sort of degrees or any type of formal piece of paper that says you've completed something in order to operate?
Right, that's what it will be. I have to go through zoning first, and then that's when that comes into play. But I can't move forward with that until this part.
Okay, and then, traffic questions, that's going to have to be something that's within our staff report that says that it is allowable. The amount of traffic that it would generate wouldn't be anything that would be a detriment. So we're going to have to just trust what staff says in the report. Although on the ground, I think that the neighbors see a little bit of a traffic issue, but I don't want to necessarily stay on that one. Somebody had mentioned visiting hours. Are there visiting hours? And if so, what times are they?
Yes, visiting for them would be two days, which would be a Wednesday and a Sunday. Wednesday afternoon from 5:30 to 6:30. And on Sundays, it would have been from noon until 3:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. And so the conditional use, if it were to be approved, would stay with the property and not necessarily your business? In understanding that we do have a three-year lease on the property, would you be opposed to us adding a condition that if approved, that the conditional use would only go for three years? And considering the three years that had gone by, that if there were no issues, then staff could administratively renew that?
Yes, sir.
Would that be something that you would be open to? Okay. And then, you said that there's only a max of six children that are allowable with, from your landlord?
Yes.
So if there were to be a condition to limit the amount of children from what the state allows for the eight, but to bring it down to an acceptable number to the planning commission, would that be something that you would be open to, a number below, understanding that you have the lease for six?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that's probably all of the questions that I have for you. But one concerning thing was the lighting on that street. And I know it's not necessarily our place, but it would be wonderful if we would be able to have somebody come up there and look and see if they could get some of the overgrowth, if it's within the city property or the city needs to do anything to create more visibility and lighting in that area, just in general, whether it's approved or denied.
We can put in that request to Landscape Services. It looks like there are two street lights across the street right in the vicinity of this home.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schoonover?
Yes, I want to thank you for your efforts. I recognize how valuable a project like this is, and I know several people who do things like this. I was curious, can you not hear me? Normally, I'm very loud. I don't know why you're getting. I was curious, just because I know people have been talking about how they were worried about experience and so forth. I know you have a lot of people who are going to be working with you, and you say they're certified and so forth. Did they have a lot of experience that already?
Yes, you received, or should have received, a letter from Sierra Ricks, which she's the owner of her group home facility in Norfolk, Virginia. She actually deals with full-blown behavioral health kids.
So you're going to be having a lot of help. That's really wonderful to hear.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just had one quick question I don't think we've completely addressed yet. Some of the neighbors were concerned about parking. I heard from you here that you have a vehicle for the children to be able to go to their appointments and to go to school. But have you thought about, like, when your staff come, is there adequate parking at the home?
Yes, ma'am. Like I stated, it would be a transportation service is setting to play right now so that car won't even be at the premises. Personally, I don't even have a vehicle of my own, so that's, that's that. The kids aren't driving anywhere, so no need for that. It's a driveway, you go in, a car go here, and a car can fit here. Then, you know, the on-street parking, like, right in front of the home.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I don't foresee the, you know, the business bringing any more traffic than what's there already.
Sure, so potentially then about two cars per day?
Yes.
For your staff?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hippen?
How many bedrooms are in the house?
It's a total of four.
You're right, okay. All right, okay, so there's four bedrooms, one of which will be the office.
Yes.
So that's why, so then one bedroom, two bedrooms would have three kids, one bedroom would have two kids. Essentially, if you were to go, oh no, you're not going out. So each bedroom would have two children in it?
Right.
Okay, so I'm conflicted, okay? Full disclosure, I know the area well because I used to live in Glenwood. Now I live in the Alexandria Development near Centerville Elementary. I also ran to be the delegate over there, so I have walked around Rugby quite a bit. I've had friends over there. I'm conflicted here, and like I said, Sergeant Major can tell you, I'm a retired master chief. We normally don't have a problem talking. But I'm conflicted here for a couple of reasons. Because it is an attached home. That is one issue for me. It is an attached home. And I know, and I have a 16-year-old that I'm raising, that's my great nephew. I know how boys are. And he has an older brother. I know how the boys are. In an attached home, that's my, that's one concern. That's my main concern. Parking, the driveway is big enough. I think the driveway will suffice. I think you have enough assistance to overcome the lack of your specific experience. But it sounds like you have been surrounded by these people. But my concern is the dwelling itself. I think you have an outstanding landlord, at least he projects well enough that if he's not a good guy, he's certainly faking it good. Your lease is not contingent upon you getting this approval. Am I correct? In other words, you have signed a lease, you have furnished a place.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're locked into that lease no matter what?
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanted to get that straight. I am conflicted, and this is the district that I represent. I do agree with your landlord that we do need these group homes. I feel for the people that have homes around you because I understand what they're saying. The neighborhood is, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to say it politically correct, but I don't think it's going to come out that way. We live on the side of town that is browner and earns less money. And that is a concern that I believe is being registered here now. So you've got a three-year lease. I would stand for this if it were in conjunction with your lease only. So that when the lease renews, you would have to renew the conditional use permit. However, I do believe, and like I said, I ran for office, so I know how hard it is knocking on doors and getting people to come out. I had some very gracious people come and speak to me yesterday when I walked up to them in a T-shirt and a pair of jeans. I had my name tag. That's probably why they talked to me. I would really like to see a little bit more interaction with the community. So my question to you is, would you be able to do that in the next 30 days and come back and see us in November with more community interaction? And I am willing, as the commissioner for this district, to do more of that interaction as well. And to get word out to these people that you do have supporting services, that you do have experience from your mother.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't think your neighbors have seen this for them to support you. That is my concern. And the kids would suffer if the neighbors don't support you. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So what do you think?
I can agree to that. I mean, we attempted it, but like I stated, it wasn't friendly.
I saw, I saw the remark where you said that, you know, you went around and.
Yeah, and I have two sons, too. And they may look away to society, you know, and that was the help. So I'm not willing to put my children in danger.
I understand.
As much as I want to bring awareness, as much as I want everyone to support it. But if we haven't done nothing, you know, to make you look at us a certain type of way or automatically disregard us, then I personally didn't understand it. But then I did put myself in their shoes. People hit a road group home and automatically assume these are all bad kids or they're bad kids, we don't want them.
But you didn't answer the door for me because you didn't know who I was.
I wasn't there. I was in my own home.
Oh, okay.
I saw you on the camera.
So I think you and I understand why people don't answer the door for us.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we are on the. Okay, I think we are on the same page. I would like to make the motion to delay this for 30 days until next month, to give an opportunity to get her qualifications to the neighbors so that they understand what's really trying to come into their neighborhood first, because I don't think they had all of the information.
So there's a motion on the table for a deferral for 30 days? Part, I'm sorry, what? I was going to ask for a second, can we ask her if that's okay? I heard her say yes.
I just asked, are you amenable to that?
Yes.
Is that okay with you?
It's okay.
Sergeant Major, is that okay?
Madam Chair, may I ask a point of order before this motion is seconded?
Yes.
I believe that there is a technical difficulty with this application, as it has been brought before us, that will make it impossible for the applicant to comply, even if it is granted. I would like to ask our counsel a question that may clean this up or may provide a direction that the applicant may want to take before we vote on anything else, if that would be entertained.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Plumlee, but in discussion, if we could pause and ask counsel for a point of order?
Are you referring to the fact that the application says eight and the landlord says six?
I'm not going to speak out of order, let's sort out what we're doing.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Commissioner Camp's concern is that the conditions that are written as recommended specify that the applicant shall obtain necessary permits specifically for licenses from the Virginia Department of Social Services, which, based on the conversation today, it appears that the business entity will be the applicant for social services. So I think it is Commissioner Camp's request that the motion is clear that whoever is supposed to be applying can comply with these conditions, that it either be the applicant, the business, that for this property, this license be obtained. I think there's a few different ways you could word it to be consistent with the facts at hand, and I think that's his concern.
So, to answer counsel's question, I am concerned that the applicant is an individual. The person applying to social services is a business. The person on the lease is a business. And what it's written here is, it says the applicant shall get permits and inspections. She's not on a lease, she's getting permits and inspections with no contractual relationship to the property. And it says the applicant shall maintain and obtain licenses from social services. She is personally the applicant, and she can't get those licenses. So this is defective on its face, is my concern. And no matter what we do with it, send her back into the community to talk, or approve it, or disapprove it, that she'll be in a position with the clock ticking on a lease and ultimately be unable to comply unless some of these things are fixed. And regardless of whether I support or don't support this, sending this matter forward in a defective status is my concern as a Commissioner. So I'm looking for guidance as the way for this thing to be cured, so that if it is approved, she could actually comply.
Madam Chair, can we get planning to help us with that, please?
It's my understanding, and Tori, correct me if I'm wrong, that these conditions will apply to anyone who's operating the group home, whether it's the applicant, or a tenant, or a new owner in the future. So even though it's written as applicant, it would apply in this case to New Horizons.
And the property owner as well?
Correct, okay.
But New Horizons is not disclosed anywhere on this application. When you look at the disclosures, they're not on here.
I understand, I'm just relaying how the information has been explained to me that as the way the conditions are written, they would apply to any operator of a group home on the property, whether or not they're the applicant of this specific application, or whether they're a future owner or future operator.
So now we have a situation where there are undisclosed parties. In the informal, we talked about the need to do conflict checks to maintain our integrity. How are we supposed to check for conflicts when an entity isn't even listed? I just don't know how to proceed with integrity on this, regardless of whether I support or don't.
Would the, well, Commissioner Plumlee, just as part of our conversation, and Tori with some guidance, would the deferral give the opportunity then to clear up the application to address the issues regarding the individual versus New Horizons?
Of course, I think there's an opportunity to, now that there's been disclosure. Part of the reason why we have hearings is so we can ask questions, and we get answers, and now we can deal with them, and that's all this is about. So we're in a position now, if we provide an indefinite deferral, that should be sufficient opportunity for them to correct any deficiency in the application, so that it can be resubmitted. It doesn't mean you have to wait forever, it just simply means you don't have to be back in 30 days. You can take care of the deficiency if it takes you 60 days. And so I'd be willing to support an indefinite deferral, so there would be a correction if needed. And also, I think Ms. Hippen makes, Commissioner Hippen makes the best suggestion about reaching out to the community ultimately for its input. And I would stress two things, that you work with the immediate neighbor, you know, who has to live there, and work closely with them. Also, that you consider about half the number of kids, as opposed to six. This is a small home, and I think it's difficult in that environment to have six children in addition to adults in that, in that smaller space. Those are my thoughts to share with you, but I would, Susan, do you move indefinite?
I'm looking for a card so she can contact me. Okay, here's my question to, to the planning staff. Can we put both her name and her business's name on this without having to go through a whole lot of issues?
Well, my question is going to be, just for clarification purposes, New Horizons, I believe, is Ms. Ebron, is that correct? You're the only principal of New Horizons, so that is full disclosure.
The disclosure, it may not be the ultimate problem.
Correct.
If there needs to be some technical correction, I think that if...
That's fine.
If Camp brings up a good point, it should be addressed. I think the way to exponentially deal with this is to continue indefinitely. It may take more than 30 days to correct, and it gives her time to deal with these other issues, but that's my suggestion.
I believe we do like to put dates on deferrals rather than indefinite, because that causes issues.
Because of the 90 days?
The 100 days.
Okay.
Ms. Ebron, thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you again.
Please take my card, this is, this is my personal card, but it's got the same phone number on it. Please take my card so that I can help you with outreach.
Our last and final item is Item 10, Green Clean Holdings LLC, Joe Pertucci. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, members of city staff. My name is Grady Palmer, I'm an attorney representing Green Clean. I've represented several Green Clean applications over the last year and a half here in Virginia Beach, and it's a pleasure to be here today on their behalf. I really appreciate the discussion during the informal, I think this is a really good project. I really appreciate the community meeting, we made, I think, I think we made a good project much better based on, on the feedback, and so I won't take up a lot of time, I'll speak in rebuttal if there's any speakers that need to be addressed. But I want to thank you, thank the staff for all the work on this, thank you.
Thanks, hold on one second, are there any questions for Mr. Palmer? No, thank you. Oh, pardon me, Commissioner Anderson.
Mr. Palmer, we discussed at the public meeting in reference to the pedestrian traffic. And we're going to get with, or you guys were going to get with, traffic engineering to discuss the stoplight and pedestrian crossing, has that been done?
Yeah, I don't remember, I know that Mr. Cummings had talked about some things that he was going to do. So there may be some confusion between who's doing what, but I'm happy, I'm happy to get with him before we get to counsel and work out whatever we can work out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I just want to double-check, do we have any speakers today? We do not have anybody signed up to speak, but we do have somebody here to answer questions if the commission wishes. Pardon me? Oh. Rebuttal?
I'll move to approve if we're ready for motions.
I'll second.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Plumlee, seconded by Commissioner Mouch. Is there discussion? Yes, we have Commissioner Beiler.
Thank you for being here again today. I don't always support these Green Clean applications. The very nature of it requiring a conditional use permit is a red flag, if you will, that we need to stop and look at it and see whether or not this is an appropriate location for a car wash. The comprehensive plan identifies this property as part of the suburban area, which recommends development of the great neighborhoods. And that's defined as a balance between residential and complementary non-residential use. Additionally, this specific site is designated as part of the inland character area within the commercial area pattern book. And that envisions transforming auto-centric commercial corridors into safe, comfortable routes for pedestrians and cyclists through redevelopment. I'm a big supporter of going forward and making Virginia Beach even better than it already is. And I believe in the concentric plans. This particular location is really surrounded by fast-moving cars. And for that reason, I, I take a rare stand, and I do not go along with staff that recommends non-approval. And I will support this application. But generally, I would go along with staff, because this use is not auto-centric. I mean, excuse me, it is clearly auto-centric, and it does not further the goals of pedestrian and cycle-friendly. But in this location, it makes sense to me, so I will support it. I just wanted to go on the record explaining, so it doesn't look like I'm flip-flopping.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Camp?
Similarly, I would not normally support this, but we do have the leeway to look at specific sites. And like Commissioner Beiler, I am inclined to support the staff and always to support the comprehensive plan. In this particular location, the other three corners, I don't believe are going to have an evolving use anytime soon. And as such, to attract a use on this fourth corner, given the legacy building that's there, that someone would have to then incur expense to do something with, most likely would leave us for an extended period of time with a vacant building. And for that reason, and looking at the modifications that were made to the site plan after the public meeting, as well as our site visit, again, in this rare case, I am willing to contradict staff's recommendation, which is not my normal inclination, and to go ahead and vote to approve this particular exception.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hippen.
As you remember, back when you did the one at South Plaza Trail in Holland, I was a thorn in your side. This particular plan, and I greatly value what planning staff says. However, this is one of those exceptions where I will support this car wash going in at that location. Brilliant as they are, every once in a while, I will go along with the applicant.
Thank you very much. This will be the second car wash in my district. I had the opportunity to spend time with Mr. Palmer and at the public meeting, as well as going over to the site on Virginia Beach Boulevard, with a really specific focus on how it would affect the neighbors being so close. And I was satisfied with the landscaping, the fencing, everything that was happening at Virginia Beach Boulevard's location in Kings Grant. And I've seen time and time again what a good neighbor they are. And that'll be my expectation on Great Nick Road again, so I will be supporting it. The vote is open, we have a motion on the floor, if there's no further discussion, motion for approval, Commissioner Plumlee, seconded by Commissioner Mouch.
By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, Item 10, Green Clean Holding LLC, Joe Pertucci, has been recommended for approval.
Thank you very much, that was our last item, we are adjourned.